United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to Monday Morning Meeting. Did everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? And I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented unless there's any changes.
Motion approved. Second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, approved minutes from October 21st, 2024, regular meeting. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes. Motion to approve. Second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved employee claims filed with the county auditor for $375.79.
Motion to approve those claims. Second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, approval appointment to the Veterans Commission. We have three candidates. Gentlemen, you guys?
Don, you have anything? You're one of the candidates. You have anything say about your application or wanting to serve?
No.
Okay.
Only thing I have to say is that something we have did on this whole thing over the years is to try and make sure we got some diversity throughout the county, you know, like somebody from the northern end or eastern side or Jesper area or down southern part uh, of the county that wanted to serve on this board. We kind of had a distribution kind of throughout the county instead of like everybody out of one community area. I think these early applications here on these individuals, I believe they really have a interest in doing the right things for our veterans in our county and stuff and serving on this commission. I don't know if we've had anybody from up there in the Aurora, Lamont area that served before. Do you recall anything on that, Don? You've been around for a while.
Yes, there was a person up there.
That wasn't Cole Fasig from up there?
He's from Hazelton. No, from over by uh, Lamont. They live just uh, they live just uh, north between Lamont and Aurora. They live by Merly's, go to the end of the road. Mike Peck, they live right at the corner of Mike Peck's.
I just can't come up the name yet, but I know the area you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I, I think any of these three applicants would be are definitely willing to serve and qualified to serve and stuff and have a passion for veterans, help veterans of the past. We got Julie is newly at Campfield, newly appointed. She's from the Independence, Otterville area. Fasig is Hazelton. And we just had somebody from the southern end of the county resign, but we don't have no applicants for the southern end of the county on, that want to replace, so. Hey, you two have anything to say about this? I I'm very happy that we got three applicants wanting to serve.
Well, this guy from up by Aurora. He's a nephew, or Cole Fasig is his nephew.
Yeah.
I don't see that as a problem, but.
Where's the other two from?
Anybody else got any?
Well, Don's from the south of Independence. And this third one was from here in Independence, rural Independence.
Oh, 192nd Street.
Could I speak?
Yes, you may.
You guys do whatever you want. Seriously. I mean, just because I said just appoint anybody you want. I'm not here for that reason.
I think I would just take a motion we pulled, gave it again to the better support.
I will second that.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You want me to reach out to him or you want to, Chris, or?
No, that's not my job.
Okay, I'll reach out to him and let him know.
All right, um, we have approval liquor license amendment for Donlin Corp, LLC.
Uh, basically after looking at that, there was an ownership change is what it was. So they had to do an amendment to update to the current owner.
That's what I was saying.
So like a CFO or CEO, something like that is what the change was.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve that.
I have a first. Do I have a second? Right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Items up for discussion. We have a 915 zoning, so, oh, no new year management plans?
Nope.
I know.
Can we just see us a small removal?
You guys want to go on to, uh, snow removal?
Yeah.
Okay, so the kicker of that is, so Henderson just contacted, reached out to me. I forwarded to you guys regarding what you were doing for snow removal. I completely forgot because of the midst of election time. However, back on August 19th, you guys did approve G and L Lawn Rangers because of the way the contract states. So it's completely up to you guys if you would like to throw it out for bid and you're gonna have to tell G and L that, you know, we changed our mind or just let Henderson know that it's already been filled. The contract's been done.
I think that's the best way to go and tell him that we'd be happy for him to reach out to us next spring for bid for the for snow removal.
Yeah, that sounds like a that sounds like the best way to do it because I
I saw it there and approved it.
You want to backtrack?
Right.
But Chris said you'll let him know that.
Yeah, I'll just shoot him an email.
Let me do it again. Sorry, technical difficulty. All right, so, um, you can go to discuss senior center repairs?
Aye.
Don?
Can we do this in seven minutes?
Yes.
Yes. The water fountain, that's a senior citizen center went long gate. It hasn't worked properly for a long time, but it overflowed. Made a mess. That's all cleaned up. And I did get some bids for new water fountain. Just to replace it as a drinking fountain. It's a thousand dollars. This is from Precision Plumbing. And to have one with a with a bottle filler. That one's 2,250.
Oh, we smoked.
So my question is, being some public fielding, do we have to have a water fountain?
Well, I think it's very important to have people have water available for drink because hydration and health is it all boils back to water, 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 you know, you're supposed to drink water. So I need direction on this.
We want to just deal with replace it with the regular water fountain again?
That wouldn't mind.
You said something like, was it the drain that caused this problem, the mess and backflow or the water mess or?
What happened was that water fountain was left unplugged because it freezes up.
Okay.
Somebody saw it unplugged, plugged it back in, it froze up. Then a bunch of crap got in the valve and it turned on and stayed on. Of course, it shot clear over the top of the water fountain. All over the floor and how long it ran that way, I don't know. It was a really big mess.
Well, there's two things that could cause it to freeze up. Well, coils need cleaning or improper refrigerant charge.
The, the oils didn't clean. They didn't need cleaning.
And it's how old?
Pardon?
I said it's how old that was put in there?
It's been there since the
I think it's pretty important to have water available there for people in the public sector. Because people come in there to use that building, rent it, and the veterans are meeting there and and I think it's important to have water available for people as much as we can. So I think it's important to
And the location will be there. I hope we can get her down to the board. If you decide that you were going to do it.
But boy, I tell you what, more than doubled the price of just having a bottle filler on it, didn't we?
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Make a motion we go with the standard water.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. And pay for out of maintenance? Building maintenance?
Yep, there's enough dollars there.
If not, I will let you know.
Okay, you want to amend that motion?
I will amend my motion to pay it out of the
Putting your, you okay with that amendment? Pay for now the maintenance front?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Don, can you get ahold of them and let them know to put it, see if you can't get a get it in before election time?
If it's under a thousand, it's a thousand dollars. So I think it has to be under 2,500 before you have to get two bids.
Hmm, that's correct, right.
Right.
So I'm all right on that one.
You're good. Yeah. All right, and I also have some other things on the senior center. I was trying to get get it pulled up, but my computer's being silly right now. Um, I got a motion, I got a, I had Chad Beatty with Winthrop Building Supplies walk through the senior center um, to get a list of, of every items that are bad, going bad. There's a couple doors that are rusted out on the bottom. One of my needs a threshold replaced. Um, the windows, um, in the shysters room need to be replaced. The windows on, in the front area need to be replaced. Um, he recommends going with commercial grade because wood is just running out. So, and he gave us a bid. It came in a little bit higher than what I anticipated. And plus the wall that we cut the hole in needs to be replaced along and that work around the door and then the wall down, um, what the seniors call the party room. Which wall is that, Don?
The south wall.
Yes, the south wall. It is bad.
And that's just to replace that or cut out to check the plate?
Oh, plus the rest of the, I mean, if you're gonna have them come in and replace a four by four square, you might as well have them do the rest of it. The ceiling is sagging right there because we had the water that came in. So that all needs to be replaced.
So we need ceiling repair work done?
Well, right, right along that beam, yeah.
See along the floor, water come in under the floor, about halfway up in that building.
I was gonna say, we need to put this discussion on hold. It's 915.
We want to go to
Want to call the public hearing?
Public hearing.
For order, please.
For the zoning hearing for Finnell, for the Mary flat. You have a motion to call?
To make a motion to open up the public, um, sorry, hearing for Finnell.
I had a first and a second. All right, it's, the public hearing is opened. Amber?
So this is located in section 33 of Washington Township on 218th Street, so just off of Golf Course Boulevard. This was recommended for rezoning by the PMZ on February 7th. And it was passed, um, by you on March 11th of this year. So this is the subdivision flat with the three lots. I know it's kind of hard to tell. So I'll just kind of show right here. So we've got, um, lot one just kind of runs up and through here, lot two and lot three. And then I low deck, also standing up here. So there's also a house right here. And then these three houses have a shared well agreement, um, that has been previously recorded and is filed. And I have a copy of that as well. So everything for the subdivision, um, and then compliance, it meets everything that pertains to the split directly. Um, there will be a septic easement also for lot one and two. Um, if you can see the kind of gray areas here, kind of notate where those systems will be. And then the north lot up there will have its own septic and its own well. Um, there were nine neighbors adjoining or adjacent that were notified. And again, nobody's shown concern, no phone calls, um, for or against this. And then with it being in the two mile radius of Independence, um, it has to be reviewed by the city, which has been done. Um, their first one for the preliminary was on August 12th. And the final on October 1st. So that has been completed.
So they had no objections to this?
Correct. Yep. Yep, they've been, they haven't reached out to us very, very much communication wise. Um, probably that Andy Haber from the attorney's office is trying to communicate a little bit better with both departments on that. Um.
Was there any conditions listed on this, on your board or anything?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, and if there was, we probably would have touched on that during the rezoning process. But nothing for the
There's no closed driveway access for the third one?
We have a permit. We haven't put it in yet.
Okay.
We're waiting for their approval.
So you got, you put a permit in the second one in there, but we have them putting it off until
Would you like to see it?
This is approved.
Okay.
I would love to know if that's permitted or not. But you're, the permit is then approved. Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, I mean, as I guess I mentioned, everything needs our subdivision ordinance. And I would ask that when we, when I bring back to you the final review in the next few weeks, um, to waive the second and third reading on that, since we've had no neighbor concerns or issues. That's all I have. And if you guys have questions?
Okay.
Take a motion to close the hearing?
First, we have a second. Sorry, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing's closed. Right. Did you hear any comments from anybody else for the discussion?
Yeah, nothing at all.
We need a motion to approve the temporary plat, or preliminary plat?
Plat?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve the preliminary platform or?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're here.
All right. What about the senior center repairs? Unfortunately, the printer didn't work this time.
Need for all along the bottom. That's all spongy and where it's whipped up.
About how much you think you got would be comfortable types of example that, Don?
Well, I think probably a foot along the bottom would take care of.
But you have, you also have that door right there that is saggy, the sheet rock's shaggy.
Yes.
And that whole one wall, I mean, that was, it'd be nice to get, if you're gonna have somebody come in and do sheet rock, it's nice to have them all at the same, to do it all at the same time.
Yeah. So, so that ceiling is if we get ready, is that, is that ceiling sheet rock or is that?
It's, it's above the door like this. The door's down there.
Okay, so the sheet rock above the door on the wall.
And the one along the beam, because remember there's that beam, there's a hung ceiling, but there's that beam, that one beam, between the two.
But we're talking about, we're not talking about repairing the ceiling. We're talking about repairing the wall up by the ceiling, right?
And the sheet rock on the seal, on the beam. It's all brown and moldy.
So the beam's encapsulated with sheet rock?
Yes. And to take down?
I'm just trying to get a visual here, so we know what we're talking about. Why they the sheet rock?
I was just here for the water fountain.
I, I, I really think we need to move ahead and get whatever sheet rock and get that taken care of. I mean, if it's had moisture, we know that what moisture goes to sheet rock and stuff, it just deteriorates it. And there's only one thing to do with it is replace it.
Did you get your bid tools there gone? When we were looking at it?
Well, my suggestion was not to do the, was, I mean, we need to do the windows at some point in time, but maybe we can just take this and do it in
Stages.
The stages. It has like the west window, would that be the west, that party room? That wall along the party room?
That'd be the south wall.
That's the south wall.
Okay, south wall paneling and removal. Um, insulation, vapor barrier, I got plywood. Vinyl panels. Trim. Arctic seal on the south wall, exterior building and spray foam insulation on wall cavity. Yes, nails listed, all kinds of stuff. I would have to get this, I'll calculate it out into just what this one part would be, but it's more than our threshold. But we need to get it bid by two other people. Do you guys have any preference? No. Do you have any suggestions?
Preference and what, what to move ahead and what, what, what projects to move ahead with if you're asking?
I, well, yeah, the, I was assuming we're gonna move ahead with the sheet rock.
Right.
And save the windows for next year.
Yes.
But as far as contractors, because I don't want to waste, I don't want to get like a couple of bids from contractors and all of a sudden somebody suggests an outside contractor yet again, and then have me waste my time because they come in from a different community that doesn't have maybe the same liabilities.
Indeed.
And you want to try to PJ that Winthrop or look, um, Schultz, yeah, Big Schultz.
No, it's fine. I this is, it's gonna be another one of those that's a small job.
If we're just talking about sheet rock, uh, isn't there people, but name a wall, it was Don, that do sheet rock work?
I don't think they do anymore, but I couldn't wrong.
Yeah, tearing off, disposal. Spray foam insulation.
There's a guy that lives down in Kloski and I don't know who he works for does sheet rock work.
Peyton?
No. No, lives right in town. Um, he did some sheet rock work at my son-in-law's daughter's house. I can't remember which company he's with. I can get that contact information from him. He does sheet rock work.
As long as he's not gonna, as long as he's funded.
Oh, right, exactly.
Right.
My question is, where, what budget line are you guys planning to pay this out of?
I think we actually had senior center put a, put up 25,000 at the senior center at project time.
Uh, seen, it was for parking lot, senior health and public health, senior health, sorry. Senior center and public health parking lot. There was 60,000 set of budgeted. So that will take away from, it's gonna have to take away from something that's your guys' discretion on what it is.
Or a carpet project or something like that. Because windows can get and we're talking windows and doors, you're getting into all different thing for expenses.
Right, right. The whole bed, the whole estimate was about 48,000. Which, if I could get it printed, I would give you a copy of it.
Can you email it?
I don't want to have to.
Well, I think, I'll make a motion that we move ahead with getting, uh, see if we can get for quotes on the sheet rock work and getting the sheet rock work done. And including in that, do we want to see if they'll paint it or are we gonna have something else?
Well, this was, this was painted too. They're painting it.
Okay, I just wanted to know what was your man?
How about the motion include similar to the prior bid excluding window project or window portion?
Window and door.
I guess I would have a concern, is there gonna be sheet rock damage when we go to replace windows? That's gonna have to be fixed. They tear off the old windows and reinstall new ones.
Are we talking about sheet rock needs to be done around the window area too?
Yeah, below the whistler area, all along that south wall. That's all feel that bad, right, basically.
Yeah, and so we, all along, and so that, everything behind that blue board is, needs to come out. Yes?
I'd like to say something.
Yeah.
On what really that north door in about the middle of the building. That thing is rusted out really bad. Now, you could throw a cat under that thing, but I will cobbly it up to make it through the winter so that it isn't
It doesn't steal the wood door?
It's a steel door. And I can put a seal on the bottom and it'll hold for a while.
Is this a door, Don, that the delivery's coming through?
No, it's just a door.
So basically, right now, it's just kind of an egress door?
Basically, yeah. Or if they have to bring something in out of those buildings, they use that door.
You're willing to seal that door up there?
I will seal the bottom of it the best I can. Thing when the light shines, it's like that. And then the wind comes out of the north and so probably oughta put a new seal, put a seal on it. I can do that. Whatever the cost of the seal is, then I'll And I'll put it on for no charge. Just like all the other stuff.
Let's figure out how to get him to do the drywall for no charge.
I'll think he'll agree to that one.
Well, what's your opinion, John, on the?
I, I just, I just. I would hate to see us. Fix all that wallboard. And then. In six months, replace windows and damage it, ask that, have somebody come in and. Mudd it and repaint it.
Do you wanna get the whole project in?
Wow.
We did something.
Can't we just, can't we just do, draw a line here, just get this done down in the base and above the door, and the base that needs to be done?
I'm tired of patching stuff together, I mean, we can only barely, you can only do so much duct tape. And we have, we sold one building. So we're down to two buildings that the county owns, plus the courthouse and secondary roads.
Well, what we're talking about here, if we're gonna do this, and the concern that John's got, then we need to move ahead then with the windows, but we gonna, are we gonna? What are we gonna do, you know, you're talking.
My point is. In the long run, we'd be probably better off doing it all versus piece.
Right.
And. You know, we still. Do we have some ARPA funds that we could use for part of it? Cause we have over two hundred thousand left, then we look, right?
Figure out what Buzz's radios are gonna come in.
Yeah, we're, we're, we were talking like Buzzie, we was talking about that, like a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, so you take a hundred and seventy-four out of two eighteen.
Out of Warren, look.
And I, I have no idea, uh, over the treasurer's office, she wanna do some counterwork over there, and I don't know if she's gonna. I, I told Gina, we're working on a deadline here, that we, we gotta have a year there, if you're gonna move ahead with that counter.
Well, that has been approved, you guys approved that by resolution, so she has her until twenty twenty-six to.
To do that.
To do that, correct, and I think it was less than fifteen thousand dollars.
But she was wanting to make, she wasn't quite clear if she wanted to. Do what her worst, what her first original plans were, she thought maybe she'd do some tweeting to the plans of it, so which is gonna change the cost. And I imagine the prices that she got already, nobody's, that's been a couple of years ago. They're gonna change.
You can always take it out of the project fund.
Well, you know, it all depends what you wanna do, we got.
Just not do the parking lots.
The sixty thousand for the parking lots.
Yeah, so you had HVAC system at DHS for eight thousand six hundred, senior center parking lot sixty thousand. Courthouse lights twelve thousand, electric food pantry eighteen thousand. E O C, I do not recall what exactly this was for, but seventy thousand you put aside for that. For a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred.
That E O C, was that had anything to do with the money that.
The money.
We should for, uh, upfronting the money because we were having trouble getting the grant money in timely, did that have any tie to that?
No, this is the twenty-five budget. That all transpired of twenty.
Parking lot, maybe after.
That was a parking lot?
Well, she's got the parking lot sixty thousand, that, that included out there, the parking lot were out there and senior center. Didn't have two separate parking lot deals.
So there, there is money there, it's just the fact that one of these other projects is gonna have to be pushed back until it's budgeted for at point twenty-six.
Well, I know we were trying to drag our feet on the parking lot thing because of the city's plans about doing that greenscape on there. Didn't wanna do the parking lot and then.
And tore back up.
And it tore back up. So I say we hold off on the. Parking lots maybe, and then. Go ahead and do the senior center repairs.
Do the, the windows and everything, the whole nine yards.
Windows, do the whole project.
Let's get it done.
There's a door. Both the door and the frame is rusty. That need, and that Brian needs to be replaced.
That quote that you had, Don, that included the windows and doors, right?
It included windows. Don walked through the, through it with Chad. Me and Chad and Don walked through it. And looked at everything.
Are we still experiencing plumbing problems over there? With the sewer?
Roto-rueder came in and did they, I think the plumbing problems have been taken care of.
We paid for that, council on aging did. Uh, no troubles with stools flushing or nothing right now. Oh. That was, that was an ongoing issue for quite a while.
I think probably the biggest thing that hurt some of the plumbing, some of the issues over there was just being shut down for a year, and nobody, nobody going in and running water and flushing toilets once a week and doing that kind of stuff, and it just.
That's happening now.
Yeah. Did you get all on one page? Yeah. Well. Decided, I'm thinking, let me see, can I see the front of that? I don't know why.
Don said forty-eight, we got thirty-nine here.
That one sure is. Oh, you got more coming. There's.
So this thirty-nine or nine thirty-one, is that?
Your body.
Then that's all this? How'd you come up with the forty-eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-nine, nine thirty-one, I didn't think it was. Yeah, thirty-nine, nine thirty-one.
Well, that sounds a lot better. Like nine thousand there.
Yeah.
Well, we're definitely gonna need to try and get some. The contractors bid. And if they don't, then we, we made our good taste pepper.
Right. Sounds good.
Okay, so we need a motion to go ahead and, uh, move ahead with, uh, these repairs that need to be done and. Building improvements, uh. At the senior center, uh, and get additional bids.
Yes. And we'll contact these two. Medeed and, um. Copy this over as far as what's to be bid and.
I will second that.
Alright. The first and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Last thing is hand frame for employee reviews.
When do we do that, November, December?
Yeah, yeah. Karen? Ashley?
That will get it in this time.
It was before Christmas. I think because we wanted to get them done be, before.
Before five get up.
Yes.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So. When are you looking at doing these?
We need a couple weeks to go now, and Don, you have to.
We do have our employee meetings on the seventh. And then the following week, the eleventh through the twelfth. Um, the eleventh is of course a holiday. So then Ashley's gone for a conference on the twelfth, okay? So.
Well, I wanna make sure I got at least two or three weeks to get done.
Yes.
So do you wanna, just like last year where the employee. Kind of scores themselves?
I think what we, I, I think we had a good system last year, I think it worked out well for us.
Okay.
And we, you know, we had, we looked over different review processes, forms and stuff like that, and we came up with this in the year. That we use and stuff, I, I had no issues with that form, did you?
You thought it worked well?
Think I'm okay with what we're going to hit to do in a repeat.
Okay. John?
So I have theirs turned in.
You gotta give them a couple of weeks, you know. If we look at the last, well, we don't wanna do it. What's wrong with the first week of December, I mean, is that okay, or not? Is that putting it off too much near everybody's else's mind? We got, we got Thanksgiving, you know, last week and then.
I'm good with, I'm good with giving them the reviews the last week of. Or the first week of December.
First week of December, it's fine with me.
Hey, Dave. I will let you guys know, I gave you my, I will be given my notice. I talked about the thirteenth as my last day.
So you'll still be here for those reviews then, and, and Ashley will sit in on them?
Mm-hmm.
Be good, and then.
Is there a day, a week that works, do we need to come up with a day of the work week now, uh, that works? Do, what did we try to do in all one day, or do we do two days, or how do we do?
No, I think you did more than one day last year. Um, I will ask each employee if they want co-session. Or if they want open.
Can we go ahead and start on? I always kind of set by Monday, that's my courthouse day and take care of a lot of stuff, so can we work some stuff in on that Monday afternoon already?
On the second or the?
On the second, yes.
Um, you're having them return theirs that first week, right?
No, let's, I'm having return theirs by the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Of November.
Twenty-second?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Cause I do have time to, what we get, need to be done, that's undone.
Well, then we go on Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
So maybe we oughta.
Do the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I'll do the twenty-fifth.
Have them return to us twenty-fifth. And then we'll start giving them on the week of this.
If we start getting something scheduled that Monday afternoon or Monday afternoon or whatever. Hope I'm gonna sneak out here before this happened.
No.
Dates on my calendar from last year. I didn't put them down.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we'll schedule how many I can on the. December second. And then go from there, try to get them all done by the sixth of December.
Once you get your schedule together, just shoot me an email and I'll send out the co-session agenda.
Okay, sounds good. And it, probably Ashley's gonna do most of the works if she knows the process in the future.
Right. And do we have a prize or a process in place at secondary roads for, for Brian to review his employees? Cause I know like county conservation, they review their employees and ask other, other boards and commissions, but. Does Brian have a?
I have no idea what he does.
He should, but just like every other department has, whether he chooses to do it or not, that I do not know.
And since they're union employees, I know there's been. Issues regarding that, while we're union, we get our increases no matter what, so.
I know, but, um, he's, we just have a feedback. Or, you know, you're doing, you're doing a good job or.
And I know motivation is non-union, so theirs is based upon.
Their board.
But, yeah, I guess that might be a discussion you might wanna have with Brian.
I'm asking.
But. Yeah.
So it's second, it's what we're settling on?
That's when you'll start how many we can get. In.
And, uh, everybody have their, has their zoom by Monday, the twenty-fifth of November. And are we just gonna send those out this, this week or next weekend?
Um, we'll try to get them out. Hopefully next week. Hopefully next week.
Uh, fourth, Wednesday the fourth. Morning of, I will not be available.
Of December?
Yeah.
Supposed to be a district six ISAP meeting.
One o'clock. That's the one we go, what's that? That's the one we go to and debute to regional.
Right.
Yeah, so all three of you won't be available.
So Wednesday's probably not a good day at all.
Yeah, Wednesday will be off. Please pass Clayton.
I better look ahead.
And.
This night, we, we make sure we go over there soon enough so we get fed when we go over to lunch.
Did you still wanna do evaluation me or?
Um. No, we do have one on Ashley.
Huh?
Do you wanna find a little evaluation Karen? It's not gonna make any difference to you.
Well, you could, you could use it on your resume for your next job.
Yeah, well, there won't be that, um.
It felt like your exit interview.
I'll probably start one on Ashley.
Okay.
And then a few guys, so unless you wanna do one regarding her.
We'll do it for Ashley instead. Afternoon, just start one on, you know, since you are the current department head.
So, and then that will be another. Item is getting on the agenda to discuss her replacing me. So. I planned during doing that. I did a little talk.
I don't think we have dates set.
Around the eighteenth of November. If I could get on the agenda to discuss.
Sure.
Go from there. Cause that would be. Probably a good time.
Okay.
Good.
Now make a phone.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
You too.
Rest of the day.
Too.
Other comment?
Service, anything for us this morning?
Doing the cause. Don, you got anything else?
Do have one other thing. The sign. Uh, the senior citizen centers falling off the poles. Literally rotting.
Okay.
The big metal sign out in the parking lot?
Yes, the great big.
Is that plywood?
We, yeah, that and treated Dubai sixes, but. I have contact, we have the money to do that, that was part of Ralph Framer's. Family donation, do repair that sun. I have contacted Josh at Signs and More. Once, I've had two more conversations with him, I am getting nowhere with him. And I know you wanna keep the business in town, but what am I to do?
Go outside of town, then, if he's not contacting you back, then, I mean, he's either too busy. Or, you know, something else is going on there, I'm not sure.
But I'm just letting you know what happened, I've talked to him two different times, besides that, I'd happened to see him out. Uh, and one time he said, I'll, I'm gonna get to it, I'll get back to you, and the next time I saw him, he says, I think I have all the pieces made for it, it's like, what? You know, you don't, so he's not on top of it.
Right.
Now, if you want me to try him one more time, I will, but.
Try convey signs, I know they do some work in conjunction with convey signs.
Who?
Convey signs? Convey signs. As the employees.
If I weren't just attached base with Josh one more time, supposedly he's got stuff cut, you know, just shake his tree one more time, if you don't get a response then.
You, you can't cut something if you don't, if you don't do an estimate and get it and.
I need a price.
Yeah.
No, I need a price. I need to know what he's going to do, and I need to know what it's going to cost. But we do have the money to fix.
Planning to do the electric with that too, Don, or?
I didn't go there, but the conduit that goes to that sign to light it up. Is broken underneath the ground, and what happened, somebody hit that. Junction box that was on one of those poles and pulled the conduit into. It's under the parking lot. But.
So we have to. Clear the parking lot.
Keith Curry had run a. Wire down there. And measured where it stopped and come the other way and measured where it stopped, and he's within like this of knowing where it is.
Well, if we tore up to do that repair, then that would just be a matter, if we gotta tear up some asphalt, but we can get some pole patch and probably fill it back in.
But it wouldn't be a place any more than like a foot's ground.
Yeah.
We should match that, patch that.
Is that, would that be something you'd wanna include in that money that came from the Kramer Trust?
Probably. Because it's all part of that sign repair.
All right, um, yeah, and never mind, convey is permanently closed. Signs and more about him out or something.
I just wanted to bring it up to you and then tell you guys what was going on, so.
Okay.
Why he won't get back to me. Because I've done quite a bit of business with him before, you know, not for sign, but for shirts and things like that. We've never had a problem.
Right.
Especially when I run for supervisor, I had a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah. Try it one more time and see if we can't take a street.
Out there in person. Emery.
Well, I did once, he wasn't in the last, the time I was out there.
Is there anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Meeting is adjourned. My computer works again, hallelujah, except for I don't print now.